Six fields or five fields where we only have four.
And I think with any of these projects, we've, we do find ways to pull, maybe pull a little bit from the general fund to make it make sense, do in-kind work with our city crews at, you know, different levels to save costs. But those are just, I think, things that we're, we want to see with eyes wide open going into this, know that we're, we're gonna hurt, we're gonna bleed a little bit from this. Are we willing to do that? So, I think tonight we've maybe peeled a little bit more away. I, I don't know.
When are we going to start discussing budgets for next year?
Probably, Robert will be starting on those in August. You'll probably see a draft first meeting in October, maybe the first, first read, the second meeting in October, and finish it up in November.
Now, all these items on this list was, as I remember, it was in the papers, people put what their desire wants and needs. Each one of these, that's a false advertisement date, this is what the people ask for. These were picked out from the park board and other people, but some of these didn't even get fifty votes, you know, like some of them didn't. But, I don't think it's un, unbelievable or impossible for you to tell me then, I'll wait for the proposal come in and we go from there, but we still have that man, so you're gonna finance it. But, in the first five years, I'd still like you and the park board to say, what are you gonna do to the existing parks and recreation stuff? You have soccer field, veterans and all that. Is it, to build this dream, is it gonna kill rest of the park system? And, so I'd like an answer from you and the park board on that. What stage, three years or five-year plan, what's gonna happen to the rest of the facility?
You, you see what we need every, every year on the capital improvement list, so, we, we will, we'll continue to address those needs. As, as things wear out, like they do, we'll, we'll repair them. You know, when, when it, when it breaks, we fix it. That's how the city operates. So, and I, and I would just, just to remind everyone, the, the three things that were at the top of those surveys and the top of the, the needs list were, one, a community center, two, a baseball complex, three, an outdoor pool, followed by an indoor pool. Yes, there were some things on there, like racquetball courts. That, that was kinda high up on the list at one time, but...
You know, they took us a while to get here, so it's not popular anymore.
Yeah, so, yeah, you, you, you listen to the consultant, you find out what, what trends are popular, what, what this community is lacking, and, and that's how the building came together. But, if, I'd like to have a lot more in the building, to be honest. I'd like to have a bigger track, I'd like to have another basketball court. But you have to be realistic and you have to try to keep it within budget.
All right, thank you, Clay.
If it's all right, we'll move on. Is that cool with everybody? Okay. New business, City Holiday Lighting.
Neil, can you step in the hall and bring the reed in? We're talking about the downtown and Business 54 holiday decorations. We, the City of Fulton, no, the community acquired those between twenty-five and thirty years ago. The city bought them used, so we really don't know how, how old they are. Over the past, probably four or five years, the electric department has sorted out and kept using the better ones. We are down, based on input from the electric guys that, that do the hanging, with some assistance from other departments each year. In December of 2017, we made an assumption that the Christmas decorations were the Chambers. I'm, I'm, even as of today, I don't know if that's a correct assumption. I don't know who owns them. Right?
They just store them.
And I, and the city stores them, puts them up and takes them down. The city did not purchase them. I have learned in the last few days that they were purchased by the Chamber. This is what I've been told. I, I believe it to be true. I have been, that they were purchased by the Chamber by some large individual donations. The, the Chamber was a pastor. The Chamber did not buy them. They were the pastor organizations for the community to acquire them. Well, we gave the Chamber a letter in December of 2017 indicating to them that Christmas of 2018 would be the last season, Christmas season, that we would put them up. We looked, we actually had a delegation go to Kirkwood. Kirkwood, I, I put out a blast to all the city managers and states, said, does anybody get rid of any Christmas decorations? Heard from Kirkwood, we sent a group down there to look at them. They were just huge. They were big. They were unusable for the City of Fulton. And then it came around that, that they're, they're not the Chambers, the Chamber really wasn't interested in pursuing the acquisition of additional Christmas decorations. So I just kinda wanna tell you that, right now, and, and if you want me to go, I had one of the electric guys go over this one and kinda show me some of the problems with it. Kinda what the guys, ladies, the, the wiring's thirty years old. Okay? It's cracked. The electric department guys are nervous that if one of those bare wires gets, because the, the frame is steel, if one of those bare wires gets up against the, the pole that it's attached to, it could cause someone to have a really bad Christmas. Okay? It could cause someone to be electrocuted.
But, these are the ones that went up, like on North Business 54, right?
Yes.
But don't the light poles on North Business 54 do not have electrical connections?
They do not. So these are the ones that are also gonna be up on Court Street. They're also on, on Court Street and the Brick District and kinda through this area. Okay?
Yeah.
So like, North Business 54 and South 54, they, they won't have decorations anymore. Okay? But, but these are for the downtown, Court Street, Nichols, Nichols.
Do we know how many poles built are on?
I think, didn't they count? It was like thirty-five, forty?
Yeah, about forty.
About thirty-five to forty.
Forty.
There is a possibility, possibility, that if we asked the electric guys to go through them and can, to see if there's, can they find twenty-five, if they're willing to put up one, one last year, and make a plea to the community, if you want Christmas decorations downtown, downtown or not. We might be able to find twenty-five out of the group that they're comfortable putting up. But, you know, to buy, to buy new Christmas decorations such as that, I'm gonna guess that wreath that sits right there is somewhere between four and five hundred dollars. Okay? And, we are possibly, possibly late enough in 2019 that if, even, even if somebody said, oh, write you a check for fifty thousand dollars, we might not be able to get it for Christmas 2019.
Guess what, Bill?
Come on.
Just so happens, I made three very specific contacts at the Recon Expo for downtown decorations. And I've got three contacts that do this sort of stuff, for downtowns, specific to smaller downtowns. And I've got a lot of good information on that to purchase new. And even, they've got contacts for people that have purchased from them recently that might be looking to also upgrade so we could buy used from them. I was gonna bring that to the council as one of the concerns here in a couple of months. There's a lot of new technology out there when it comes to the Christmas decorations. There's a lot of lightweight LED stuff. And, one of the things that I brought up to them was, you know, a lot of the early LED decorations, when you get it, the LEDs were so bright that all you saw was just a glob. You know, if that was lit up right now with the five-year-old LEDs that they used to have for that size of a thing, it was just a glob of light. You couldn't even tell it was a wreath. They've, they've modernized that, they've toned some of that down, they can put color. There's examples where they could string lights from across Court Street, you know, to create kind of a downtown walkway whenever we, we have those downtown events. There's lots and lots of stuff out there. And yeah, you can spend two hundred and fifty dollars on an item, you can spend twelve hundred and fifty dollars on an item. Depends what you want it to do.
I sent Mike West, Mike West is very involved with the Boy, with the Boy Scouts and Eagle Scouts. That's why I left a text today saying, does anybody need an Eagle Scout project? I mean, 'cause, 'cause what we got there, folks, is, we got good bones.
Sure.
We got great bones. And, the purchasing department, they bought, you know, we put that wire on, on top of the buildings. It's the same stuff, just, I think that's eighteen-inch spacings, and we could buy the same, same stuff with six or twelve-inch spacing, buy new, but, I mean, that's just incredibly labor-intensive. It would take, I don't know, six to eight hours probably to recreate that. Is there a Boy Scout, is there an Eagle Scout that's looking for a project for a troop to, one guy with a set of snips and to strip them down to nothing, and another guy with some adult supervision, willing to, are able to put some lights back on and new garland and that kinda stuff. So, I mean, we're, we're looking at options. And I just, it's, it's June, and I'm, it's been brought to my attention by certain individuals that, you know, those lights have been up in downtown Fulton since before they were born.
Yep. People come here, our little town, because we do put up a lot of Christmas decorations.
So, maybe, you know, maybe we can ask them to look and find twenty-five to just do Court Street, or twenty, to do Court Street, that they're willing to sort them out and check them out over there.
I would hate to not see Christmas lights.
Are you?
Oh, you, every, everybody would hate to not have Christmas lights.
This picture from the seventies is what I showed the people of what this town used to look like.
Okay. And, and that's a great picture, and I've seen that picture before. Another, another thing, as far as the banners across the street that go across the street?
That's what I grew up to.
We, we might be getting out of that business too, folks. 'Cause those stringers that go from across the street, from building to building, those buildings are now much older than they were twenty-five years ago. And we've had buildings, bricks just fall out of buildings on their own downtown. And, it's been brought to our attention that, under the right weather constitutions or a little wind, I'd, I'd hate to be responsible for pulling down four hundred bricks from the side of a building or, and having it land on somebody or something.
Well, heck, I remember one Sunday morning where Regent says, now, and the whole building fell down in the middle of Court Street.
So, as far as the stringers across the street, I mean, if we keep putting those up, we're gonna get some serious waivers of release from the people who own the buildings we're attaching to. Anyway, I wanted to bring that to your attention.
And I think there's been some feelers put out to, to maybe get a committee put together. We'll do the best we can this year.
I'm not, if you're gonna do-
No, I said I'd drop Mr. Stone's name.
I would love to be on that-
Yeah, right. He'd like volunteers, doesn't he?
I would love to be on that committee. I've got lots of ideas for Christmas lights in this community.
That part scares me now.
I, I definitely like seeing the Christmas lights in town. I think it brings a nice charm to our town. I do not like the liability of having, you know, old electrical wiring on our light poles and things. So, we need to do something.
Neither do I. All right, you guys have been made aware. You guys know, if you've got any great ideas, talk to me later. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to council concerns. I'll start to my right. Councilman Shiverdiger?
I have nothing tonight.
Councilman Moore?
I really don't have one concern, but I would like to point out that, did, I mean, did Kyle get to read this card here? I'm not picking out any department, 'cause I'm sure you had a lot of help, but this was a, some of our handicapped citizens said, made us aware of us, something on the bridge crossing by Wim Woods. And, to your department, we got a very nice note back thanking you so much for getting it done quick. And then, now they both can go across, up the sidewalk and get across the bridge. So, thank you very much for that.
Kyle, I, I read that thank you as well. They're giving Steve the credits.
She is it.
They gave Steve the credit for getting on there.
But, no, I gave him and his department the credit back because, and I have talked to Sis, but it was, I appreciate that, 'cause she was really excited that you really made them to get across there quick.
Little things like that make the difference sometimes. It's awesome. Councilwoman Pastner?
Um, the only thing I have is when we were at the MML training, one of the things that Murma brought up was, um, older sidewalk conditions and culverts and liability issues of somebody possibly, you know, falling over a section. And so, I don't know if we have any areas in town that need to be addressed, that might need additional railing or fencing put up to prevent somebody from accidentally falling over and then suing the city. So, just like to take a look at, just the, around and see if there's anything that needs to be addressed ahead of time.
I think we can base already to a point. We have some monies allocated for that annually, is that right, for sidewalk improvements?
Yes, we, we've recently designated a sidewalk project on a yearly basis, and we also have a, a material labor fifty-fifty kinda sidewalk program that we have. But, as far as a full end of every sidewalk, every culvert and everything like that, we do have somewhat of an inventory, but, you know, we're always looking to improve that. And rating, rating those certain areas is important, because we only have a certain amount of funds to address, and there's, there's plenty of issues out there. We'll, we'll continue to look for ways to improve our process.
Thank you, Kyle. Anything else? Move on to, Councilman Braun?
I'll just go back. I seriously think that we could do more for city hall security. And, and I know we've done some surveys and we've talked about some things, but it's one of those things that I think need to continue to move forward with trying to come to some resolution on what is right or wrong for us.
And we, do we have some process in place for doing some training? I, I know Chief Conflict Resolution was one of the things that was talked about, I believe. That'd be cost-effective.
Steve, and I, Officer Laguette can help us out, but we're much trained to be a trainer in, the, the old term is verbal judo.
Talking to de-escalate a situation.
And I told Bill that he would not have to come to the podium tonight, so thank you for-
He's volunteering.
Making me going back on my way. Yeah, he volunteered, I didn't call him up.
I didn't hear you calling at all.
That's right.
We, we do have officers that are trained in conflict resolution. The verbal judo is what it used to be called. Also, active shooter training that we can provide for the city. So we are prepared to offer whatever presentations and training that you would like to have.
How long are those classes?
They can be short. I mean, e- even an hour or less, just to, just to give the basics and, you know, maybe run people through in shifts. But we can, we can get it done.
Kinda talk to some of the guys and talk to us a little bit, and try and get something done in the next couple of months.
Okay. I will make sure Chief knows.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, I don't. Oh, yes, one thank you. Thank you for removing the flashing signs.
Yeah. Kyle did-
But I hope you guys don't miss them.
Are, are getting the light removed on Rado, is that right?
Thursday, I believe.
This week.
Like today, maybe?
Yeah. So that's, that's kinda nice.
Thursday.
That'd be very welcome for people to drive, drive through there, I think. So-
Someone needs to invite Mike West to the, the taking down ceremony.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We need a photo op there, don't we?
He was very much vocal about that light at that location.
Yep, I forgot that. So, moving on, Councilman Stone?
Yes, after our conversation at one of the last meetings about the, the ash bore and all of that, I did reach out to some of the Boy Scouts and Scouts and Cub Scouts, because there are various merit badges in forestry and ecology and Eagle Scout projects, and I've gotten a couple of feelers back. We may be able to get our inventory of, of trees, we may be able to get some treatment opportunities and some different things from, from that project.
Excellent.
So, that, that's, you know, again, we don't, as a city, we don't always have to take the, the full brunt or cost of something. We just need to partner with our community partners.
Just like the stream team.
Yep.
Yep. Fantastic. Thank you.
So I'll keep you up to date as we, as that moves forward. And that's all I have.
All right, Councilman Simmons?
Uh, I don't have anything.
And Councilwoman Seibacher?
I have nothing.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Is there, have I missed an email, or is there any plans yet about a float to the council? Are we all riding in the parade or?
There, there is a float that's gonna be in the parade.
And we, and we, we talked about that a little bit yesterday with some folks. We need to get some detailed plans together as far as, you know, encouraging the employees to participate and show up and coming up with the float design and getting twenty-five hundred ice pops ordered. Kathy? And fro, and, and frozen this year. And frozen this year. We buy them frozen. So, yeah, we need to, we need to spend a, an hour or two just really doing, going over some of the logistics of who, what, when. And, and, thank you.
Good thinking.
And specific to that, it does take twenty-five people to carry the flag. And I know that was gonna fall on council members as well as city employees. So if anybody has an interest specifically in walking in the parade and helping to carry the large flag.
And just so everybody hears once again, it's not only for city employees, but it's for their families. Spouses of city employees have spouses that oftentimes go out in the middle of the night, and go away from their families, go away from their families over the weekend or for twenty-four hour shifts. So we wanna open it up to the families as well. Be fun to have just a bunch of little kids too, walking with us and-
One more question. This one's about what Mr. Stone brought up, what he learned new about relatives on boards appointed. How, and you know I'm the one who complains that our chart is only to benefit you financially, that you don't have, then you don't go. But, so, how far, what are they going in a relative in this?
It, it's called a, a fourth degree relation, and that's through marriage or blood. So it gets to be like that second cousin twice removed sort of thing. So, it, I mean, the, the presenter was very adamant about, know who your relatives are, know who your spouse's relatives are, know who's being appointed, and do your research before you vote on that appointment. And it does not have to be a financial gain. It's, you are, it, it's that relationship, it's nepotism, that if, if you're, and it, it is a automatic forfeiture, not just forfeiture, but they, they remove you from, from your council seat if you're found to have done that. So-
The person you appointed gets to keep their appointment.
Yeah, the person you appointing keeps their job. You lose your council seat.
And that's all on the MML website as well, the charts and graphs.
Yes, we're a small community, so that's relevant and good catch, guys.
And that's, that's why I wanted to make sure to-
So we'll move, move on to resolutions?
Yes.
We've got a second reading. Bill number fifteen forty, Councilman Braun, if you would present that, please.
Bill number fifteen forty, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relationship to an application for federal and state assistance for the Elton Hensley Memorial Airport to assist with new hangars and approving the city's local match not to exceed ten percent of the projected cost. I make a motion to place Bill fifteen forty for third reading at the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Is there discussion on this? We head something in our packet?
I just, I just, I, I will be happy to, to read. Everybody should have it in front of them, Fulton Airport facts. We have thirty-nine hangars leased out, of which only four are City of Fulton residents or have businesses in the city limits. There's thirty-five overall that are from all over the state. Thirty hangars rented for a hundred and fifty-six dollars a month. The rest of them are higher or other special arrangements. If we would increase just twenty-five dollars per hanger, it would increase revenue by nine thousand dollars a year at the airport. If the lease amount is increased and someone decides to move to another airport, it would free up space for the waiting list. Out of the twelve, oh, excuse me, the airport over the last twenty-five years has lost, don't know whether "lost" is the right word, but one point six million dollars, an average of sixty-four thousand dollars a year that the airport's been in a negative. Out of the twelve airports that are within fifty miles, we are the lowest price fuel per gallon at three dollars and sixty-four cents. The average for the twelve is four dollars and thirty-one cents. We are below by sixty, almost sixty-seven cents, less than the average of the twelve airports that are local. If we just came up to the, what the average is in fuel, we sell about ten thousand gallons of fuel a year, we'd add another sixty-six hundred and fifty-eight dollars in revenue. The capital projects are what send the airport into the negative over the last twenty-five years. The other couple of things that I did is I wondered in myself, what was storage sheds in town? A twenty-by-thirty storage shed rents for two hundred and fifty dollars. That's not, that's a storage shed. A ten-by-forty is a hundred and twenty, and these are three different locations and different sizes. That's why I couldn't find all the same sizes at the same place. And the third one is ten by twenty at seventy dollars. Square footage-wise, those dollars don't come close to what the airport is charging. And are we, as the council, making the best choices for the City of Fulton when it comes to the airport by spending extra dollars, when every year, for roughly the last twenty-five years, is sixty-four thousand dollars average in the hole?
Is there any more discussion on this? Do we have questions at all?
I, yeah, probably. The purpose of the capital improvement project is because we have all of this federal grant money in a bucket that we would end up losing if we don't spend it, correct?
Partially.
Yes, Valer. We are appropriated a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year from the federal, from FAA for airport projects. And, we do not- And, uh, if we do not obligate funds within a three-year period, we will lose them. But, I would like to, I would like to address the Fulton Airport facts. Because, as I look at the numbers, Councilman Braun's reporting the airport as, as a, as a loser. And I, I just plain and simply don't see it that way. When we're talking about capital projects, how do we fund those capital projects? We fund the capital projects through the appropriated money, ninety percent, and as of, from about two thousand thirteen, fourteen range, it was actually at a ninety-five percent clip. So, that means the city was actually funding those projects at a five or ten percent clip. Now, you know, I'm not Kathy, and I can't explain the numbers as well as she can, but when we're taking, when, when we're accounting for an asset at a hundred percent, but we're only paying ninety or ninety-five percent, that's a little misleading.
I, I guess I don't, I guess, as well as what you have here, and just looking at operating expense, to say that the airport would recover, there's more to the airport than just the operating expense every year. And, and Kathy, am I wrong?
The... I, I'm not sure I understood the question, can you say that question again?
Okay, if we just look at what, between hangars and rent and fuel sales, what goes out and what comes in, that's not the only thing that goes into the airport, otherwise we would be in decent shape year after year after year with the airport. Am I, is that a true statement?
On a year that the airport has no capital expenditures, uh, the airport is sixty to seventy thousand dollars in the black. The capital expenditure is just due to the fact that a capital expenditure at the airport, being the, being that is a airport beast, is just very expensive. I think the last airport, the runway we history did was two million dollars. So, even at, so two, two million dollars to get a new runway, so that, you know, the two, the, the ten percent local match on that port was two hundred thousand, which, that's real money, again, for us. That's, I think, does that answer your question?
Yes.
I'd, I'd further that with, uh, over the past fifteen years, we've done two major runway projects, two major capital projects.
Without a doubt, I, it's still a negative number in my mind, Kyle.
And, but, but to further what I'm discussing here, is that in those last fifteen years, we are in the black, including those capital projects. And, and I would, I would, um, encourage the opportunity to look at those numbers in more detail.
I, I, I am looking at it right here, and I'm seeing in two thousand and seventeen, a negative twelve thousand forty-four seventy-three, and the adopted in two thousand and eighteen was a hundred and thirteen thousand four ninety-two, right on the budget. Right here in the budget. Unless I'm looking at that completely wrong, which...
I, I think there's an opportunity here to gain some knowledge in looking, looking at those numbers, maybe even for myself. And, uh, I would, as, as, uh, you know, even today, I was in Kathy's office looking at claim on cash that the airport has. And, uh, you know, she went as back as far as she could in, um, in our current billing system, which was, what, fifteen years ago or so? And, uh, you know, our claim on cash fifteen years ago was more than our claim on cash. We're actually in a better situation today. Now, it fluctuates from year to year, but that demonstrates, that demonstrates that over the last fifteen years with, with the capital improvement projects that we've had, it's not a loser. And I would say that if you, if you want the airport to be, um, less of an asset, then don't build hangars, because hangars actually account for most of the money that we make at the airport. So, if, if you want the airport to be less of an asset, I would, I would...
If it's about the free money, Kyle, that's a different story, and I hear you. But unless, unless somebody else can tell me that the numbers that I received are incorrect, then I have my opinion, and I'm allowed to have that, and it makes perfectly good sense that four people in the city of Fulton either have a business or live in the city limits, and we're taking care of the rest of the state with our airport. I don't see it as, as a win for the city of Fulton.
I think that, uh, I, I would also say, and, and indeed, you're entitled to your opinion, and, and like I said, I think there's a learning chance for both, both of us and everybody on it, and, uh, but, a- and many of the facts that you listed, it's the first time I had a chance to look at it. But, uh, many of the items you list here, uh, I think we should look at, you know, I think they're great ideas. I mean, I, I really do. You know, I think there, there are items that we've discussed looking at, and, uh, and all your facts do is validate that, and I, I, I think it's, I think it's, uh, good work here. But I, I would say that to claim the airport as a loss, in, in, in my opinion, is, is a misnomer. And, you know, we did have an airport advisory board meeting today, and, uh, you know, I thought the reason why, you know, we're looking at hangars to begin with, guys, is because of the condition that the airport is, is in presently, it's in pretty dang good condition. But for me to say that is one thing. I do have a guest here, and, uh, you know, David Hollabon's here. He's a, uh, leading member of the Kingdom Pilots Association. He also has attended, uh, multiple airport advisory board meetings as a pilot that's in the air. And, um, and I, and I've got him, and I would like to invite him to just give you guys an idea from a pilot's, from the pilot's perspective of what, what the present condition of the airport is and why we're thinking, you know, hangars is a good idea at this moment, uh, because it does generate revenue at the airport.
Absolutely bring it up.
Again, uh, Mr. David Hollabon.
Thanks, Kyle. Um, to be respectful of your time, I prepared a written statement, and it'd take me about two and a half minutes to get through it, and I'd appreciate it if you'd let me get through it before you ask any questions. As Kyle said, my name is Dave Hollabon, I'm a professional engineer, I'm a private pilot, I'm the treasurer of the Kingdom Pilots Association, I'm an alternate member to the airport advisory board, and I'm a renter of hangar number nineteen at the airport. And in the interest of full disclosure, I should probably say I worked with Ballard at the nuclear plant, and Mr. Stone's wife babysat my kids when she was a teenager back in the day. So, that's, that's my relationship to the council. I am in support of Bill fifteen forty for a capital project to build additional, uh, hangars at the airport. I learned a long time ago, it's not a wise financial decision to leave money on the table. During my career, it was difficult to come up with the funds to max out my 401K, but I always found the money to obtain the company match. Uh, we've got a similar situation here at the airport, only it's much more attractive economically. A councilman stated at the last, uh, city council meeting that he did not believe that this is money well spent. Uh, for a city contribution of approximately sixty-nine thousand dollars, you'll obtain an immediate one thousand percent return on investment with the grant funding, with the project then becoming cash flow positive after five to seven years, depending on the number of hangars that are built. That's a fourteen to twenty-one percent annual return on investment, which I think any one of us would take. But another way, the city can increase its net worth by seven hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars by spending sixty-nine thousand dollars. That's also a deal I wish I had. I think this is an excellent use of the taxpayers' money, and in fact, I think it would be negligent if the city does not take advantage of this grant funding. There are many other projects that could be performed at the airport, I'll name a few. Paving the grass islands at the existing hangars would facilitate snow removal for your crews. Installing gutters on the existing hangars would eliminate waterfalls when it rains and icicles when it freezes, a safety item. Adding Wi-Fi to the existing hangars would allow pilots to remotely control their block heaters. Right now, the pilots just tend to leave their block heaters on all the time during the winter, so electricity is burning all the time, uh, could save electricity that way. Uh, the lighting is pretty old lighting in the hangars, there's a lot more efficient lighting that are available now, such as you're talking about here with your Christmas decorations. Uh, purchasing or obtaining an easement on the land south of runway one eight-three-six and removing the trees would increase, uh, safety factor for existing traffic, would also allow for lengthening that runway in the future for larger aircraft. Resurfacing the parking lot in front of the terminal building. So, there's a lot of different things could be done out there. All those projects are worthwhile, none of them would provide the return on investment that you see from the hangar project. Uh, the current hangar waiting list exceeds the number of hangars to be built. I think those hangars would be filled, that's based on, uh, a list that Kyle and his folks maintain. Given the overall excellent condition of the airport infrastructure, um, the airport needs to be in good condition for, to get these grants, uh, the airport is in good condition with the exception of the real lights, and this would be a, a ideal time to pursue the project. General aviation supports training, it supports business and personal, personal travel, it supports recreation, uh, environmental surveys, firefighting, agricultural spraying, law enforcement, military, and other purposes, okay? Nearby airports in Columbia, Jefferson City, Booneville, Mexico, and elsewhere have recently taken advantage of the type of grant funding that we're talking about. If the city of Fulton does not use these allocated funds, the money will be forfeited, and it'll be given to other Missouri airports. Progressive communities recognize the value and, and support general aviation, and I encourage the city council to approve the project. And I'd also like, just to briefly address Mr. Braun's concerns, and I haven't had the benefit to look at, at the information he's got. But my understanding, the financial folks could probably explain it a lot better, I believe the reason that, that the airport appears to be in the hole is because we're depreciating assets at a hundred percent, which we only paid five or ten cents on the dollar to get. And if you depreciated them at five or ten cents on the dollar, I don't believe your numbers would show us in the red, rather in the black.
Depreciation is the factor, I, I will say that, but you, you also have to, you, that, that's part of a profit and loss statement.
Yes, revenue and expenses at the airport on an annual basis are, I think, as, uh, Bill said, are sixty, seventy, eighty thousand dollars a year. One year of revenue over expenses would pay for the sixty-nine thousand dollars that the city's being asked to donate. Secondly, in regards to hangar rental rates, uh, Kyle and his folks, uh, performed a survey within the last month, I think you received a copy of it. And of all the local airports in the vicinity, the only one with higher rental rates, on average, I mean, there's particulars based on size and so forth, was Lake Erie, Ozarks, and Kaiser, and, and otherwise Fulton, was, was right up there with their rental rates. And thirdly, um, and Bill can attest to this, because we had an airport advisory board meeting today at the airport, okay, and pilots are stopping in for fuel. We asked them, "Why do you stop at Fulton for fuel?" "Because you've got economical fuel," okay? We are known for having economical fuel. And, and so, I like to think that what we don't make up in our, our per gallon price, we make up in volume. People, every time I see a new, you know, an airplane out at the airport, I'll recognize, "Why'd you stop here? You got a tracking field process." So, that's, that's the extent of what I had to say, I don't know if, if you've got any questions for me?
Do you feel like, do you feel like ten thousand gallons a year is a lot of fuel to go through the airport? I don't know what a plane takes, okay? By no means do I know what a plane takes.
Mr. Braun, I can't answer your question. I burn six and a half gallons an hour, I fly fifty or sixty hours a year. So, three, four hundred gallons, that's for me.
Because I, I look at it this way, and, and, and believe me, I've thought about a lot of this. If I have a Ford pickup truck and it burns twenty gallons a week, I burn a thousand gallons of fuel in one pickup truck a year, at twenty gallons a week. It doesn't seem like ten thousand gallons is a lot of fuel to me, to be going through. I don't know what an airplane holds.
Forty gallons, in my case.
Forty, is it?
Forty.
Really? Scary.
These are little airplanes.
Any more questions?
You mentioned it, David, thank you very much, on the depreciation expense. When we do look at the enterprise fund for the airport, it does take into account, the two thousand and eighteen budget took into account a hundred and sixty thousand dollars with the depreciation on that fund. But we're only comparing that depreciation expense, as well as the other expenses, to the flat revenues from there, you know? If we were to then add the assets onto that side of it, I mean, unfortunately, the, adding the depreciation expense under that fund at that time does show a hundred and thirteen thousand dollar loss to that, when actually it's a forty-six thousand dollar gain. When you look at the revenues, true revenues over true expenses, we've projected to make forty-six thousand dollars at the airport. It's only through the accounting purposes that we had to add the depreciation expense in there, and that's when we showed a hundred and thirteen thousand dollar loss.
And where do those depreciations come from, capital improvements?
It comes from the assets, but the assets aren't on here to show that balance.
Again, if you look at the claim on cash, we, we are not increasing in the negative. You know, from fifteen years ago to now, we're not, we, we've actually made up ground about to the tune of, of how much we're in the black over the, over those years, so...
So, the number I, that I rece- so, you're saying the number that I received from Bill, which received it from Kathy, is not correct? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
I'm telling you, I think it's a very good opportunity for us all to sit down and look at it. Because, um, guess where I got my numbers?
I, I didn't get them from anywhere other than...
I think it's, I think it's in how the numbers...
It's not a pie in the sky number that I just dreamed up, Kyle.
And, and neither, and neither is mine, I'm not, we're, we're not having an argument over, I think it's, I think it's an educational opportunity for, for us both. Uh, I know I was in Kathy's office trying to get educated on this topic, uh, as late as five, past five o'clock today. So, um, you know, I would encourage, I would encourage you and, and myself, and, and anybody who wants to join, to, to, to have a good conversation on it, because, because, uh, I can tell you, I went through line by line to get my numbers, and I also went to, went to, uh, the source and the person who knows a lot better than I do on them. So, um, that's what I would say.
She knows a lot better than I do, too, and, and that's all I'm saying is, is... I didn't, I didn't dream one number up off this, what I put out here. Not one number is dreamed up on my part as pie in the sky.
And, and, and I didn't claim it to be either, I, I'm just, I'm just giving you how I see the numbers, and, and when you're looking at depreciation, um, I, I think that you have to also account for the fact that, as, as David mentioned, you know, when we have a capital improvement project, we're not funding that at a hundred percent clip, we're doing that at a five or ten percent clip. And, and that, that's, you know...
Kathy, you would, do you have, do you want to come up and defend yourself, or?
You've got three minutes.
I won't take three minutes. I think what we have here is a total misunderstanding of terminology. I think there is confusion about what a negative claim on cash means. I think there's confusion about what an asset is, since we record the full value of the asset. Mo dot's portion, our portion. We are required to depreciate that entire value. Everything has a lifespan. If we, if we depreciated on only our five or ten percent, it would take thousands of years to depreciate that amount. So, I think there's just some confusion on how it all works.
But in our budget, going back to the depreciation side...
But a budget is totally different than a financial statement, just...
It is, oh, it is, it is.
So, we're on the same page there.
How we're coming up with some of Jeff's numbers and some of John's numbers...
Depreciation is a non-cash expense.
We, um, in the expense, in the expense columns, we are required to show depreciation as the cost, all right? Only in the enterprise funds. So, it is taken into consideration, and it shows up in the, as, as a total expenditure. It shows up in that line. Then if you go over in the budget a couple lines into the total adjustments, because depreci- she's not... depreci, she's not going to like when I say some of this stuff, but depreciation to us does not mean anything.
Because it is a non-cash expense.
We don't, huh?
It's a non-cash expense.
And we don't do taxes, and we don't deduct depreciation. We're not, so to get to our cash position, to get to where, to a number that makes sense to me, it's pretty much the same, the same way we've done the budget for the past twenty-three years, we actually add the depreciation back in as an adjustment to show how we did from a cash standpoint last year. And based on the wonderful budget sheets that Mr. Stone put in front of me, the summary for the two thousand and eighteen, we budgeted an increase, a positive, twenty-nine thousand dollars, okay? And that, that number fluctuates from twenty-nine to sixty to seven, has a positive cash flow. So we tell them where the one point six million dollars comes from, please.
The one point six million dollars is the airport's claim on cash. And as Kyle mentioned, he had me look it up today, it's a negative one point six.
What's claim on cash?
We have a consolidated cash account. So every operating fund either has a positive cash balance or a negative cash balance. So if we didn't have all those funds with positive cash balances, it would be difficult for some of our less fortunate funds to continue in operation.
The airport, golf course.
Yes, those are our two biggies.
No, that's not a general fund.
But we have, commonly referred to as a pooled cash account. So, you know, you have to keep track of every fund.
So the one points, and you're not going to like this, but the airport's one point six in the hole, as cash is concerned...
Only regarding cash.
Only regarding, as a cash position, it does not take in the value of their assets, which we can't sell anyway, so does it really have, you know, what's the value of something you can't sell? But from a cash posi, from a cash position, the airport is like one point six in the hole.
But the airport's assets are probably, yeah.
Putting aside all of the financial, the accounting terms...
I'm twitching.
Well, it all boils down to, we have an opportunity to spend seventy thousand dollars to gain a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar asset for the city. Correct?
That will bring in revenue every year.
And pay itself off in ten years.
Well, I understand that, but I've been wanting to say that for a long time, and we kept talking about cash flow.
Yes.
Do that.
And that's the basic part of this, is with the grants, we have a chance to come up with a very large asset to the city for a minimal expenditure.
Which will, which will produce a return on investment, and it's pretty well the only thing you can do at the airport that will give you a return on investment and make the airport look, look even better in the black, in my opinion, at this point.
So I think it's fair to say, you can be negative about the airport, but still sort of be positive about this particular project.
Yeah.
Is that fair to say?
Exactly. I think the more financially, you know, the better off the airport is financially, the better the city is in general, because, you know, if, the more, the more in black that we can become, the more money you might have for other projects.
So, Dave, you fly to other cities, you talk to other pilots who don't hangar their aircraft here, is there some sort of concern? Or really they don't care, or gee, this is, you know, Fulton's a great place to go?
My, my evidence is really anecdotal. You know, if I happen to be out at the airport and somebody stops in, and I'll stop and visit with them in the fuel pump or in the terminal building or whatever, but I'll ask them, you know, "Where are you coming from? Where are you going? Why did you stop here?" Okay? And it's usually, they're cross-country trips for people. The, well, the day of the pancake breakfast, there were some guys flying basically from east coast to west coast and stopped here because of the storm that was here on that day, okay? Yesterday evening, I was flying, a guy took off right after I landed, and I asked somebody else, "Where's he going?" "Texas." You know, so there's, you know, there's a lot of people that do stop by. During Oshkosh Air Venture up in Wisconsin every summer, we get a lot of people stopping by. And most often, the answer is, because we have attractive fuel prices, and because we've got three runways, which is very attractive. If it's windy and the winds are not favoring the main runway, one eight three six, then we've got six two four. And for people that fly tail draggers and, you know, airplanes with big Tundra tires and that type of thing, they really like to land on the grass. So the turf runway is very attractive to people for landing here. So I mean, that's, you know, my anecdotal evidence for, for people stopping in here.
And isn't the grass runway kind of critical for pilots in training?
It is, as bare fact. So for your private pilot's license, you've got to demonstrate what is called a soft-field takeoff and a soft-field landing. And basically what we're talking about is turf, okay? Most pilots, most airports, they have to simulate that on paved runways because they don't have access to a turf runway. You know, we'll let people come up here from Jefferson City or come over here from Columbia just to be able to use our turf runway. So that really is sort of an attractive little feature that we've got here. And I might throw in the guys that landed during the storm on the day of the pancake breakfast. Because we had no courtesy car, I just gave them the keys to my car to drive in the back to get something to eat. That's a subject for, a subject for another day.
So today's topic, the information we have, has that changed at all? Do we have any feedback from the state about the grant money that might be available?
Thank you, David.
What, what I've done is tried to simplify the matter, you know, before we proposed a project that potentially had twelve hangars, and, you know, we've scaled that, we've, you know, what I have in the packet scales this project to the money that we do have, that we know that we're getting. No, no ifs, no buts, you know, it's what we're getting. The project's scaled to that, it's, it's going to use the money that, that is a portion to us, so, and that money we're getting.
And he is addressing the runway, runway light safety issue. He's got forty thousand planned for, to improve the reels. We did get an update on that today at the airport meeting, but it sounds like we still, we need to do some, we need to spend some money out there and get those in first-rate condition, so. So based on the fact that he's got forty thousand dollars set aside for the reels, and he has scaled it back to, depending on, depending on the bids, it would be three, four, five box hangars rather than a bank of twelve tee hangars. Probably need to go ahead with it. It is not going to require us to take any additional loans, it's not going to require us to take out any additional debt, and we'll have to bargain for or keep our fingers crossed that we get additional grants.
But if we do get that additional, it could come back to us?
It would have to come back to you for approval for any more match of any... Right now, we're just looking at you.
Would that grant, would there be a ten percent associated with that other grant?
I believe the answer's yes, but I'm not seeing it. I believe it. You're talking about a potential grant?
Yeah. Because somebody else's...
Right, right.
Okay.
All right, so you have a motion and a second on the floor to move this to third reading at the next meeting?
What was it?
The original.
Look, come down there. No, I'm kidding. If you've got more to discuss, let's talk about it. No, he got, no, it's, what were you both doing? I forgot. So if there's no more discussion, we'll call for the question. All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
No?
No.
We have six yeses and one no. That Bill fifteen forty passes on for third reading. Okay, Councilwoman Sabeacher, if you would read Bill number fifteen forty-three?
Yes, sir. Bill number fifteen forty-three, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to a contract with the collector and county commissioners of Callaway County, Missouri, relating to the collection of taxes, with the contract period commencing upon approval through June two thousand and twenty-three. I make a motion to place Bill number fifteen forty-three for third reading at this council meeting.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this? If not, we'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay, Bill number fifteen forty-three passed to third reading. If you would, Councilwoman Sabeacher?
Yes, sir. Bill number fifteen forty-three, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to a contract with the collector and county commissioners of Callaway County, Missouri, relating to the collection of taxes, with the contract period commencing upon approval through June two thousand and twenty-three. I make a motion to place Bill number fifteen forty-three for final passage at this council meeting.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor, say yes? No? That bill pass, for, answer to the roll call, yes or no?
Councilmember one?
Yes.
Ms. Pace Snook?
Yes.
Ms. Recle, sorry, Ms. Sabeacher?
Yes.
Mr. Shiverducker?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
And Mr. Braun?
Yes.
Seven council members, affirmative, one absent.
Bill number fifteen forty-three passes, thank you. Moving on, Bill number fifteen forty-four, if you would, Councilman Simmons?
Yes, sir. Bill number fifteen forty-four, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to approve plot six for South Wind State subdivision. I make a motion that we approve the second reading for Bill number fifteen forty-four at...
Third reading.
Well, we've got to approve the second reading first.
We actually just need to, yeah.
And then we will, and then...
That's not how that works.
That we approve the third reading at tonight's meeting.
We just need to place it for third reading at this meeting.
Whatever.
There you go.
Let's approve it.
Perfect.
Okay.
Second. Great.
We knew what you meant.
We knew what you meant.
Well, I knew what I meant.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor? Is that right?
Yes, we do.
Okay, is there any discussion on this? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? And if you would, read that again for third.
Bill number fifteen forty-four, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to approve plot six for South Wind State subdivision. I make a motion that we approve third reading and final reading at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? That bill moves on. You've all heard it for three times. If you would, please answer the roll call, yes or no?
Ms. Pace Snook?
Yes.
Ms. Sabeacher?
Yes.
Mr. Shiverducker?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Braun?
Yes.
And Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Seven council members, affirmative, one absent.
Okay.
So that one passes, correct?
Bill fifteen forty-four passed. Okay, and I did not come up with a replacement for Mrs. Recle, or present this?
I can do it for you.
Okay, y'all are fighting over it.
Go for it.
Bill number fifteen forty... Mr. Stone helped me last time, so Mr. Moore, if you would, please.
All right. Bill number fifteen forty-five, an ordinance authorizing the use of private golf carts from Tanglewood Golf Course for the residents of Tanglewood Business Park and Tanglewood Subdivision, established in effective date. I move this for third reading at the ninth meeting by title only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion on this? If not, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Yeses have it. If you would, read it again, please.
Bill number fifteen forty-five, an ordinance authorizing the use of private golf carts at Tanglewood Golf Course for the residents of Tanglewood Business Park and Tanglewood Subdivision, established in effective date. I move this to final passage at tonight's meeting by title only.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? You've heard the bill read three times, fifteen forty-five. If you would, please answer, yes or no?
Okay, Ms. Sabeacher? Yes. Mr. Shiverducker?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Braun?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And Ms. Pace Snook?
Yes.
Seven council members, affirmative, one absent.
Bill number fifteen forty-five passed. Moving on, Mr. Moore, again, if you would, Bill number fifteen forty-six.
If there is no objections, I will move this on to the third decision.
Absolutely.
Bill number fifteen forty-six, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, approve plot two of the Willow Creek subdivision. Move this for third reading by title only at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? If you would, read it again, please.
Bill number fifteen forty-six, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to approve plot two of the Willow Creek subdivision. Move this for final passage by title only at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? You've heard the Bill fifteen forty-six read three times. Please answer, yes or no?
Mr. Shiverducker?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Braun?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Pace Snook?
Yes.
Seven affirmative, one absent.
Bill number fifteen forty-six has passed. So we're down to announcements. The next meeting of the city council will be held Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, at six thirty. Other than that, we do actually have a need for executive session tonight.
Make a motion, we enter executive session?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say yes?